Well, six o'clock, I'll go ahead and turn it over to our city manager, Ms. Sanchez.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have a presentation from Kell with Visit Alamosa. And we can do introductions if you guys, if you want. But there's several reasons we wanted to do this work session. One, this strategic plan is to try to help guide Visit Alamosa, as well as just the community's tourism efforts for the next five years. And they've really undertaken a very public process, tried to get a lot of input from different stakeholders and those types of things. So it's a big deal. And so I wanted to make sure council's aware of it, has some chances to ask questions and just interact with Kell on what's, what's in the draft plan and, and those types of things. The other is, as we've talked from an economic development perspective, obviously tourism is a big sector for the community, and it's an important one, especially from our retail perspective, and helping some of them stay in the black type of situation. And so I think the more we recognize that and can help support it appropriately is, is very important. The third reason I wanted to have this tonight is there's a lot of overlap between what's identified and discussed in the strategic plan and some of the operations we have from a city perspective. And so I think that's a great statement as far as having a shared vision, a shared direction and opportunities for some synergy. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it, well, first let me ask before I turn it over to Kell, did you want to do introductions or not, Mayor?
Well, it's up to you. If you need to know everyone, I think you're the only one who probably don't know everyone.
So I'm Heather. I am the city manager. Harry?
Uh, Harry Reynolds, Public Works Director.
You know me, Deacon.
Angel, go ahead and introduce yourself too.
Uh, I'm Angel.
With the Planning Commission.
Kell Mortensen with Visit Alamosa.
Liz Henley, Mayor Pro Tem and Ward One Counselor.
Jan Vehill, City Councilor at Large.
Andy Rice, Parks and Recreation Director.
And I'm Kathy Woods. I'm the Economic Development Director.
I'm Jackie Vehill. I am Counselor Ward Three.
Ty Coleman, Mayor Alamosa.
Don Krepp, City Counselor Ward Two.
Okay, and Kell, I think you are ready to go.
And if we could, do you mind if Kell goes through his whole presentation and then at the end we ask questions? Would that be all right? Is it okay?
Yeah, do you want that? So I'm actually more comfortable. If, if you're okay with it, as we go through this, I very much want it to be a discussion.
You do.
Um, I, I can present this to death and you guys will fall asleep on me, but.
Okay, we could do that.
All right.
And Kell, are you okay if the lights off or do you need them on to see your notes?
Okay. I'm good.
And Mayor, I'm gonna pause my video at times because I'm working and I'm moving stuff around, so.
Okay, I didn't see you, Council Carson. So we have Council Carson, Council Carson on, on Zoom. Thank you, Council Carson.
You're welcome.
So I wasn't sure on the set, so I don't have notes here. I'm, I'm not one that does notes and presents that way. I very much like the discussion, so. Uh, we'll have this up and Holly, thank you for, for getting this there. Just real quick, to kind of give you a little bit of a background and, and who we are. So Visit Alamosa, we're based on the lodging tax and the marketing district tax. So tourism is what we do. Um, and we've seen a lot of different things and Heather in her introduction of where there's a lot of alignment, there's a lot of collaboration that we've done with the city. So I very much appreciate the opportunity to kind of come here tonight, show you what we're looking at for the next five years. Uh, because there, there's changes happening and there's probably changes coming. Uh, and so we want to be best positioned for that. And so we've contracted Solomar International. Uh, they did the state stewardship plan, so we worked with them then. We went out to kind of bid to figure, you know, what, what are we gonna look at in the next five years? So we brought them on board, uh, and they've been great to work with so far. We've gotten a steering committee put together that had a diverse representation of different sectors and different areas that we felt would be, uh, important to this process. And I'll just kind of either give a pause Holly or a thumbs up over here as we work through this. Um, so why are we going through this process? Uh, quite a few reasons. If you want to click through, you can click through all those on that slide there. The county went through a new comprehensive plan. Uh, we were involved in that process. I think it was the first time that we've really been a part of that, where we saw that on a county level tourism was going to be included as what they're looking at. Uh, so that's a new change that's coming, what they're doing with their land use. We've seen changes with glamping and what they're doing there. We saw a moratorium on campgrounds that happened at the county levels. We wanted to make sure that we were included in that process and then based off of this plan, you know, contributed towards what we're doing. Uh, we've seen that new private sector tourism investment. Uh, the, it's kind of exciting to see across the street from my office, a 90-room hotel going up. Uh, that's gonna be huge, uh, not just for the city and what we're doing there, but for tourism, the local businesses that are gonna operate around there. I, I always tease, I mean, we have 600 hotel rooms. They're all outside of the downtown. And this is gonna bring a lot of that traffic there. There's a reason Chili's is always busy. Uh, and I'm hoping to see that same impact when we get these 90 rooms, uh, straight to our local restaurants. There's that new statewide destination stewardship plan that the Colorado Tourism Office or CTO had created. So we want to make sure that we're in alignment with that. Uh, and then we have sort of this internal focus that we have within our organization and our Y statement. I'm actually gonna pass around some cards here, uh, that includes some of that and Liz, I'll have you start. So I'm always gonna refer to Liz, who's, who's on the Marketing District Board for us, so if I'm slipping up, she can step right in for me. But, but there's just changes, uh, and changes within consumer behavior, changes within the city, within the county. And, and I don't honestly can't remember, Liz, you might be able to correct me on this. I don't remember the last time we went through a strategic plan for Visit Alamosa. Uh, so we felt it was well overdue. You can go ahead. Yeah, there's a few pictures that pops up. So the Y. So Visit Alamosa has this Y. What I passed out to you is sort of what we're presenting. It shows our economic impact and what tourism does for the area as well as the region. Uh, but more importantly, it kind of talks about our Y statement. Um, and this is really what's pushing our efforts through our office. If you want to go to the next one, I actually think it has that statement there. Uh, it has the "We love our community and we strive to improve the quality of life by enhancing and sharing the Alamosa experience." DMOs or Destination Marketing Organizations in the past have very much been about promotion. We want to get people in here, uh, through marketing efforts, right? Heads in beds has been that mentality. Uh, and I feel like as an industry, it's changing, uh, but definitely within our organization, we want to make sure that's changed. We want to make sure that we're a partner that's looking at the quality of life for our residents, that tourism is a benefit to our residents, not just something that happens within our area. Uh, we've seen in a lot of different mountain towns mainly across Colorado where they're diverting funding from tourism because they have over tourism, where it's a drain on the system, on their resources. Um, it, it's not welcomed within those communities. I don't think we're at that point. We went through a resident sentiment survey and it seems like we're in a good position, but this plan very much is to approach that and address that in that sense of how do we improve the quality of life using the resources that tourism brings.
Can make sure you do the mic for the Zoom stuff, please.
What's an example of over tourism?
So a really good example, that's, that's, um, probably not relatable, but is tangible is what you're seeing happening in Spain. Where, where tourists are coming in, the public is saying enough. Um, they can't enjoy their quality of life. It's the, the place is sold out to a point where it is solely reliant on tourism. Uh, we're far from that. Um, on a state level, you'd look at places like Estes Park, uh, who, where their tourism office was actually in partnership and they moved their lodging tax to go away from tourism promotion uh, and improvements, and it moved it towards roads and daycare. And we've seen two bills now come through the state that are specifically for those mountain towns where it's, they feel like they've been over tourism. Absolutely. So how do we implement this? We have different departments, different focus areas within our office. Um, so we look at the Welcome Center, it's sort of that gathering center, that community center. We do destination development. We've seen programs like First Fridays, the We Love Our National Park. We've had partnerships with the city that's helped fund that through some of that, uh, the COVID funding or, or those, those, um, resources that's created that program. We have public and media relations. We host international, local, uh, national media to get Alamosa on the map and tell our story. And then we do it through our traditional marketing like you'd expect, um, through our website, digital marketing, social media. Um, so all these different things have a component within this Y statement, the enhancing and sharing the Alamosa experience. So who is this for, right? We talked about this. There's definitely an internal component to this that will be, um, given to my staff. It's gonna be our action items, so you won't see those action items as a public sort of document, uh, that we'll be presenting. Uh, but they're all in alignment with the, the strategy and the layout that we have through this plan. Uh, we'd look at tourism industry partners. These are our hoteliers, our restaurants, our attractions, uh, our local businesses. Then we have the Alamosa Destination Stewardship Organizations. That's where I look at the city. I look at the county. I look at SLV Go, Andy's Department and Parks and Rec, right? It's aligning those efforts of Visit Alamosa with the priorities and investments of our partners. Uh, you'll notice a lot of the projects that you are doing as a city are going to be included as part of these strategies. Um, and then we have the residents, right? We have to make sure that we're doing this for the benefit of them and that they're in agreement with it, because if they're not, then we're wasting our time. So the framework of the strategy, we'll have the vision for a sustainable tourism, and I think that's, if that's this slider, it's the next one. We've laid out sort of five goal areas and each of those goals have different strategies amongst them. We are in the public feedback section of this right now, so these are not set in stone. It's why I'm coming to you tonight to start this conversation, so that when you look through that strategy and you're saying, hey, what about? Uh, we've had a few of those instances. You'll notice in these strategies right now, you don't see, but we're working on is agro tourism. It, it wasn't included within this. Um, it was kind of brought up at our last, one of our last planning sessions. So that's another strategy that we're gonna be adding within this. So if you see anything like that, shoot me an email, we'll get it in there. There is a survey, I think you shared that out. Um, give us that feedback, um, because we're working through this process. This is just the draft we're putting in front of you right now. So when we get that, what you'll see here is that's where those action items come in. So once we have the strategies finalized, uh, the staff at Visit Alamosa, the steering committee, my board, we'll sit there and look at, here's the action items that we want to achieve. And, and then we'll piece out a little bit further and say, okay, in year one, here's what we're gonna go after. Um, and we'll be sharing that publicly through our communications and our partnerships that we have. Um, so everyone's sort of aware of what we're working on within, within this plan. So the vision statement that we have, and, and there is one addition to this, and I'll try to add that in. Um, it's a year-round tourism economy that inspires pride, supports local prosperity and celebrates and protects the people and landscapes of the Sandless Valley. That was one thing we heard, was it's not just about celebrating, um, and doing that, but it's also protecting. It aligns with the National Park and, and that preservation. It aligns with the culture and history that we want to highlight, but also protect of, of this. Um, so that's gonna be a part of that vision that we're adding in. Move to the next one. I think you can go ahead, pass this. I'm not sure what this one, oh, yep. So if you can click through all five and we'll, we'll just lay out there. There we go. So the five sort of goals or strategies that we're looking at on this is the enhanced visitor experience and longer stays. Um, when we talked to our tourism partners, that was very much the thing that kept coming up, was how do we, um, you know, how do we get that guest to not just stay one night, but how do we get them to stay two? So it's not the idea of, do we want more visitors? We want the right visitors that are coming for longer. And getting them out there, not just in Alamosa County, but even you'll see in this plan, how do we get them around the region more? Uh, we want year-round tourism growth. We hear that. It's $230 in the peak summertime as far as the hotel room goes on a Friday night. Right? The hotels aren't gonna complain about that one bit, but what they want to see is how do we get more visitors into the off-season? How do we get them in the fall, winter and spring? Uh, third goal there is tourism business development and prosperity. How do we make sure our partners are thriving? And what can we do through our office to either be involved in it or support efforts around it? Um, we want community engagement and resident benefit. Again, going back to our Y statement. We, we want them on board with this and making sure that we're growing and doing what, what supports their quality of life. And then last is the destination stewardship and institutional collaboration. You'll see in a lot of this as well, we've had Adam State and Trinidad State a part of this process. How do we capitalize on that talent that's already within, you know, our region? So number one, the enhanced visitor experience and longer stays. So our goal on this one, I think if you can click there, is we want to encourage that multi-day stay by developing and promoting experiences across Alamosa County and the greater Sandless Valley. How are we gonna measure this, right? How do we know when we've gotten to that point that says we've been successful? If you want to click there, our indicator on this one will be sort of that visitor length of stay, right? So it's not we're tracking how many more visitors are we getting, but are we increasing that length of stay by promoting more attractions, doing those other things? The next slide should give us the strategies, and there should be seven of them, and you can click through all seven. Uh, so I won't go into detail on all of these. I'll pick a few out. Again, stop me if you have questions. Um, I can just keep talking. Um, so how are we going to accomplish this? Uh, one of the ideas is how we can map and package visitor itineraries that encourage extended stays. Um, we have maps, we have itineraries. The big sort of domino on this one is that packaging approach. If someone can book this, right, all together and actually make their plan, plan there, stay and book it, that's, that's outside of just that one night and coming and visiting the National Park. Um, the Manny Patel has hired a position, uh, Deanna Richards. I'm not sure if you guys have met her yet. But she's a, a position that's just for sales, and we've had conversations with that. They're excited about packaging. We'll have multiple hotels available on this, and then we're gonna connect that with our attractions. Uh, another thing that you'll see in here, and I don't, I won't jump too far ahead. Um, but we want to develop that, that experience marketplace to create a centralized online booking platform to showcase experiences. I'll touch on this one a little bit. So Chris Seek with Solomar has a company already in mind that we're looking at. And what it would require is for our office to basically pick up that contract and offer this as a resource for our attractions. It will give them that online presence and bookability through our website. Right? Most of these attractions, we look at the horseback riding, the Jeep tours, these are side gigs that these people are doing. And so they're not giving that full attention. It's not their full-time job. So how can we be a better resource in helping them sort of be found? Because our issue isn't a lack of things to do, it's that connectivity to all these things and then getting that visitor to book that in advance. Because when they come in and they make their one-night stay and they're gonna go see the National Park, our opportunity to sell them on doing more things is probably past. So we want to hit them a little bit earlier in that process and make it as easy as possible for them to find it, but also for our partners to be able to benefit from that booking.
And Kell, before you go off of this slide,
Yeah.
just because I'm always a believer in, in being very blunt. Number four and number six obviously have significant overlap with what we've been hearing with our planning efforts as well.
Uh, absolutely. There's, I mean, so Chris, we were actually giving them a little tour. We walked down Hunt and said, okay, this is gonna be the cultural trail. We, we walked, you know, over by that new sort of property and where this riverfront sort of development's gonna happen. So it's very much in the plan and there's action items there. Uh, I think on this one, what you'll see is that continue to support that destination development and, and process versus like number five there, the exploring the feasibility. Like that one might be on ours. We, we think there needs to be a better experience on the, the history of our railroad. Um, we have all the assets. What we don't have is that museum experience for them to go and actually see what it was about. So I'm, I'm gonna be pushing and Liz will get this, at my board of, okay, how can we support this and do this? Right now, we support, support the SLV Museum. That's been a big part of what we do. We're about 90% of their funding. Um, but we don't have that control and we, we can't tell them exactly what to do. So there might be some opportunity there that we look at the Old Depot, right? It's on the historical register. What can we adjust and change there? Maybe creating a new experience, you know, for that visitor.
And I just know, attending some of the meetings, it's a room full of key partners and people that are tied directly into the, the visitor industry. They, they talk about the importance of the downtown, and I just think for council, you guys get hit from every side when it relates to downtown. And, and are we doing too much or are we not doing enough or, or different things like that? But from a tourist perspective, it's something that played fairly predominantly or came up a lot through this process. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and we hear that. I mean, anecdotally, we, we hear that all the time. We very much view the downtown like that's, that's the heart. Right? That's where your local restaurants are. That's where the events take place. It's, uh, it's not everything. And, and it's our role to make sure that they get outside of that as well, too. Um, but you have to have a strong downtown to, to be an attraction, to be able to draw people in. It's not just a pass-through and not just a one-night, like we have to have that. The hotel is a huge step towards that. Um, the other thing too is, I know you guys kind of get beat up a lot, is the traffic going down from three lanes to two. Where's the parking? We, we don't hear that complaint from visitors. They're used to it, right? They go to Breckenridge and there is no parking downtown. There's parking about a mile and a half and it's, it, it's paid at even, even that. Visitors are used to this. Our community's not, and I think that's where you're seeing a lot of those issues.
Carol, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
What, what are some of the current bundling packages that are available, uh, for people who are coming through Alamosa?
So there aren't any currently. And, and so that's why this is kind of being a big effort on this. It's connecting those hotels to the attractions.
Okay.
And, and to be fair, most of these attractions, they're new. They're, they're new to us as well. Like the Jeep Tour is relatively new. The horseback riding is new. Zapata Ranch did a great job, but now they're not in operation. And so there's some things that are stepping up to allow us to do that. Where we've struggled is the idea of like, we can't package just the Gator Farm to a hotel, right? There's, there's not enough value added to do that. Are they going and doing that and exploring it? Absolutely. But to go through that process of packaging it, it's like you have to have a little bit more value added within that to make it a sellable product. And unfortunately, the National Park and all those issues, not issues, but the, the red tape there is, that's never gonna be a package. So we have to have these other things kind of happen. And again, that's why we talk about the importance of the strategic plan. There's been changes. And, and so we're trying to work through some of those things. So the fun one of year-round tourism. So we want to extend, expand that visitation beyond the summer season by attracting new markets and hosting off-peak events and conferences. I think the biggest conversation we're having around this is the shift in mindset that when we talk about off-season travel, we're not talking leisure. Uh, I think that's been, that's a tough task. I, I mean, we, we're one of the coldest places in the country at times. Um, a lot of our attractions shut down by the off-season. So what we're looking at here, and I've already kind of talked to Andy a little bit about this, is gonna be those, the sports marketing, the conferences, the meeting spaces, bringing in that type of traveler and those off-seasons and being strategic about it. Um, because it is. It's a hard sell as a family vacation when they're in school. It's one of the coldest places and there's, we're, we're not a mountain town, right? We're, we don't have a ski area right out our back door. We have some around, but it's not right there. So we'll be able to track this and seeing where we're successful at. This one will be one of the easier things to track. We, we have that data through our occupancy reports, right? We can tell that seasonal visitation when our hotels are busy, when they're at $140 average daily rate, to when they drop to almost $75 in the off-season. So some of the strategies here is targeting that niche market with high off-season travel potential, supporting the development of off-peak festivals, conferences and sporting events. Um, supporting ASU and developing a new conference facility to expand meetings and event space, attracting regional conferences and off-season gatherings. Um, and then collaborating with regional partners sort of to develop and promote that shoulder in winter season. Some of this is looking at that ski area, right? Looking at Wolf Creek. Uh, I had a meeting today with the county commissioners and it came up there of, we have four ski areas all within sort of a two-hour radius. What can we do to package and do some of that? We've looked at that idea. It's, it's itinerary and it's something we can build out, I think, until we figure out transportation here and figuring out how to move them around. That consumer behavior is still going to look for that, you know, at the bottom of there, the base is the hotel. And they can go right out and hit the ski lift. Like that's where those travelers tend to go. Uh, and then we have some develop, sorry, back up real quick. I just want to make sure that we're giving, if you want to back up on that one, on those goals, right there. I, I think the biggest one on this is in the support role, and I'm not sure how much you guys have talked on this in city council of looking at, you know, Adam State and the potential that they might build a conference center. I just want to make sure from, from our perspective on this, because we worked with Kathy when they got the Sky High, that this very much isn't to look to be in competition with, but how can we bring a resource that is needed here? I mean, we do have meetings and we have groups that we have to say, we just don't have the space. Uh, and unfortunately, right now, that connection between Montevista and the Sky High and our hotels that are here in Alamosa, it works for some things, but, but there's some that you just have to have a little bit more connectedness to be able to make it work. Um, so I want to make sure, because this is in the plan and we've checked with Adam State and they're good with it in there, um, that we're not looking at this as a competitive sort of situation that we're looking at with Montevista, but more of that, how can we build that resource for what our needs are here?
Kell, can I ask a question too about? I'm not for sure if it was in one of our city council meetings or some other community meeting, but people have been, been bringing up hunting and fishing. Are we thinking about any of those type of, uh, people to reach out to as well?
So we, we've had that conversation too, I think, on our, our board on this one. Yeah, we have it. I, I think it's similar to the sports marketing. We, we haven't leveraged it and we haven't promoted it and utilized it. I think as a community, you know, you used, used to see those towns where it's, you see on the liquor store, Welcome Hunters, right? We don't have sort of that within the community. I don't see that too often. So we'd have to figure out of, you know, how do we, how do we push that? How do we leverage that? Um, what's actually in that market? I think your seasonality to it, like that's one that doesn't come in the middle of the summer. They're coming in the fall and, and closer to winter. Um, so I think there are some opportunities within that. So we look at tourism business development and prosperity. Uh, the goal here is to support tourism-related businesses through marketing, resource connection and workforce development. Uh, indicators on this one, we'll look at that average spend per visitor. We can get a little bit of this information through Placer AI, which we use. Uh, we also get spending reports from the state, uh, and when they do their Dean Runyon, uh, reports, that's where you see those numbers on those cards there. Uh, and then we'll also start implementing a business satisfaction and annual survey that we'll send out to businesses. Right? What resources did they use? Uh, what are they seeing? Try, try to get their feedback and measure it sort of that sentiment through the businesses. You know, go ahead to the next one. I think there's six on this one, if you want to go through those. Um, so one of the ideas is to create a one-stop shop for tourism businesses, event organizers and entrepreneur support. All the resources are here, whether that's Small Business Development Center, grants that the city gives, you guys do an event grant or supporting in that sense of what we want to create is basically a one-page that, that if someone were to come to us and say, okay, I'm looking at an event or I'm looking at starting a business, what do I need to know? And, and we have that easy, one-stop, here's all your resources, here's who to contact, uh, and, and offering that support through our office. We want to assist businesses in recruiting workers and connect to workforce development initiatives. The biggest conversation I'm having, because as an organization, I don't want us to fully take that on. We're, we're not a workforce development center. But one of the ideas that's coming about is can our office table at some of the job fairs? And we go and get any openings that are happening with our restaurants, our low, uh, lodging partners and, and bring those to the table. And we can be that representation because we know it's difficult sometimes to be able to step away and do those. I think Adam State had their job fair today, right? Yeah. And, and so how can we be a better resource within that? Not lead the charge, but be a resource for that. Uh, we want to promote grants and funding opportunities available to local tourism businesses. The state offers quite a bit, whether that's through Colorado Tourism Office or the OEDD Office. Uh, having a good, uh, sort of library of sources that they might be able to get some of that funding from. Uh, number four's been sort of interesting. I don't know if this one will continue. Heather's smiling because I think you're in that meeting. Were you in that meeting when we, no, no, no. Someone do, okay. Anyways, number four was one that we sort of got pushed back on. It was the Partner with the Colorado Green Business Network to assist businesses and adopt sustainable practices. There is some interest on this, but when we take it to businesses, it's, I have to change my operation. I have to change these different things. I think it was similar to what you guys saw with the Dark Sky Initiatives of what does this mean? And, and I don't know if that's something that we're gonna be backing. This, the, the Colorado Green Business Network, what it requires is that someone at least spends 10% of their time on staff going through the trainings and doing the process, that they can then share that with businesses. So I don't think it'll be as heavy as a load as, as what was maybe projected in some of those meetings, but this is one that's like, it's in conversation.
And Kell, just to give a little bit of example, the workforce development covers a lot of different things and a lot of different types of employers. But just one example is, you know, when you have visitors coming into, to retail operation or a, a restaurant and they're asking what is there to do, it's trying to grow that local pride and knowledge of what there is to do. Because a lot of times, our locals will be like, there's nothing to do here, type of situation. And, and so that clearly does not feed into the, the tourism experience type of situation. So that's just a little experience or example. Obviously, the workforce development is more complex than just that.
Yeah, and, and some of it from our perspective is how do we find people that love and enjoy the hospitality industry, right? And how do we get them connected? One idea that we're having is, you know, if we offer businesses a frontline, what we're calling a frontline fam. And, and so their new employees or even just the first off, any of their frontline employees, a lot of them don't go and experience different restaurants. They don't go to any local businesses. So we host these fams or familiarization trips with media and tour operators. And if we created sort of a local sort of component of that, that we could offer and saying, get the restaurants on board, let's do a tasting menu. We're gonna bring out the frontline fam on one day and we're gonna have them go and you can try these different restaurants. So that way our, the, the front desk person at the Hampton Inn isn't just suggesting the one restaurant that they've been to, right? And they can do these other things. And then we can showcase all the different things there are to do, whether it's trails or the Gator Farm or, you know, the art scape that we have downtown. So we're working on some of that stuff. We've been working on it. We've kind of been put on hold as we finish this, uh, strategic plan. Uh, but some of that, to, to your point of it's, it's not just finding them and putting them in jobs, but also getting them to enjoy the, the area and, and give them more than there's nothing to do. We're gonna organize workshops and internship programs with ASU and Trinidad State. Uh, I know we've done a little bit of this, but this will be more formal and, and I'm looking over at Liz here, because this is who we're gonna develop it through. Um, but helping them, whether it's getting them connected to the hospitality industry or even us benefiting from a different perspective and creating. or even us benefiting from a different perspective and creating content, getting more videos and help developing that skill set for the students, but something that we can also benefit from as well. And then we want to increase promotion of local businesses to maximize visitor spending. What can we do on our website to enhance those listings for, you know, restaurants or lodging? Some of that's like the attractions and bringing on that sort of booking engine that lives on our website. So how can we get our businesses better featured on our website? And then all these changes in AI and how they're finding us and making sure that we're the source that they're using when, when these AI platforms start doing their searches.
So I'll just, I'll just add a little bit. So one of the things we've done at Adam State too, is we just added the hospitality degree and it's all been lined up with the idea of this going on, that we knew this was coming and then also working with the president because the idea of doing the new conference center and things like that. And so it'll tie in and a big part of this hospitality degree will be people working in hospitality. So a lot of their credits will come from that. So kind of that'll help with the whole thing there as well.
So in community engagement and resident benefit, our, our goal here is to ensure residents benefit from and support tourism by championing the value of tourism and linking locals to jobs and community enhancing placemaking and events. Some of the indicators that we'll look at this, we'll, we'll look at local unemployment rates and seeing if there's a difference there. I mean, I think a lot of our high turnovers probably does come from that hospitality industry, whether it's at our hotels or at our restaurants. The other thing that we'll do, so part of what contributed towards this plan, I talked a little bit earlier, was the resident sentiment survey. We conducted that this spring. We won't do that every year, but we'll probably do it every other year. So that will be the next one that we're going to measure and track against this. Are we seeing improvements within that? Be honest, it'll be tough because I think we started at a really good spot. We had over 450 responses on that. Yes, there was some good feedback, a little bit of the downtown and parking. But overall, people understand the importance of tourism, which I could say when I first probably started in this industry, I don't know if people knew we were a destination. I, I don't think they thought we were a tourism town. And I think that's changing a little bit. Is there work to be done? Absolutely, but we're, we're going in the right direction. Some of the strategies within this area. We want to celebrate and share the region's cultural heritage and living traditions, right? How can we do a better job through, through our campaigns, through our marketing, through our website of telling the story of Alamosa and telling the story of the San Luis Valley better? We want to champion the value of tourism through public awareness and education campaigns. We want to link residents to tourism jobs and internships through workforce programs, develop youth and volunteer engagement initiatives, and then explore solutions to improve public transportation through ride sharing and microability initiatives that benefit both residents and visitors. This isn't anything new. We've sat in conversations, right? How do we get rideshare here? And Kathy's, yeah, right? The, the national park is going through transportation plans. It's, it's a, when we figure this out, it will be a game changer for the valley and for Alamosa. When we can get our visitors from the hotels to our downtown, when we can get Adam State students from campus to downtown or to wherever they need to go, right? It'll flow that dollar a little bit easier through our community. And so this is very much a big part of it. We've looked at, and so Adam State's looking at a few things that they're trying to do. We've, Chris, in his experience, has some ideas on things that they've tried in other places that we'll look at. This is sort of one of those, the big apple sort of that we're going to try to approach through this, but would definitely take collaboration and partnership. And then the last one on here is to support events and infrastructure that bring mutual benefits to visitors and residents. So destination stewardship and institutional collaboration. We want to strengthen partnerships that advance destination development, cultural storytelling and sustainable growth. You'll see same sort of thing as we do with our businesses, we'll do a partner satisfaction. So this is where we'll send this out to the city, to the county, to SOV Go, right? The, the ones that are within that sort of realm and seeing how are we doing? What can we do better? The goals on this one, you know, we want to support that city and county government development project. So the downtown revitalization, the riverfront development and, you know, those, those projects that you're working on that we see alignment with. We definitely want to be at the table and figuring out how we can best support these, these initiatives. We want to support History Colorado and the San Luis Valley Museum to create an audio history guide and Downtown Alamosa walking tour that brings local history to life. Again, I think if we've, we've done a few of these things, it's going to be enhancing and just continuing that development and promotion of these items. We want to connect visitors and residents to the outdoor recreation programs with SOV Go and support new recreation opportunities across the region. Collaborate with the national park to enhance visitor communication, promote national park organized programs and advance visitor behavior education. Collaborate with regional partners across the San Luis Valley to create a unified tourism management and marketing initiative. This is probably one of the bigger pieces that, that I'm looking at out of here. We have the San Luis Valley Tourism Association. They've created maps, they do little guides. It's usually one off projects. There's no unified sort of brand behind this. So one is how can we figure out potential funding to support something like this? What role do we take within that? And, because again, we understand and I think had enough conversations that we know we have the resources. We know we have the hotels, the restaurants, you know, we have some attractions and those things that will draw people here, but we don't own that visitor. They, they touch so much more than just Alamosa County. And so as a whole, if we were able to combine that as a product, when we look at Wolf Creek Ski Area, we look at, you know, the Revolution Bikes in South Fork, the Coomberson Toltec down south, like when we put that all together, we strongly feel that we actually have a competitive product for the rest of the state of Colorado. And it would be a lot easier to get visitors in here and packaging that all together. So how can we sort of find this more regional approach to, to tourism and marketing? And then we want to align tourism initiatives with community NGO missions to expand collective impact. So that's the five goals. And again, this is how we'll lay it out. Each one will have that strategy, we'll have the action item. And then we're going to develop year by year sort of which pieces we're going to tackle and take on. Very much my mindset and ideas that, you know, this isn't the last time you're going to see me. I'll, I'll be coming back, whether it's working with Andy or directly with Heather and putting some of these action items and saying, okay, right? Here's our alignments, right? What are we doing on the riverfront development? And where can Visit Alamosa sort of step in? Do we need to be an advocate for, right? In some of these projects. But I think the next slide will give you a little bit where we're at. So this is up, open to public comment. It will close on November 18th. We will have action items that we'll be working through in a revised final draft that will go in front of us as well as the steering committee and my board. From there, right, we're going to hopefully finalize this. We hope to have a plan finalized and in hand by December 19th. And then we're off and running, it's January. Questions?
All right, question time. Well, I'll, I'll take the questions as I see your mic lights come on and we can get started. And somebody's going to have to let me know when Councilor Carson raises his hand so I could see it when he raises his hand.
I just want to send a quick thank you to Holly because you did very, very well. Thank you, Holly, for all of that.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you. Okay. I don't see Carson's hand raised, so any, any questions?
I'm sorry, I, I do have one question. When the mayor asked about the hunting and the, the outdoor promotion, it seems like that hasn't really gotten a, I guess the, the traction that, that I, I don't know if you, if we would like that or not, but it, it has come up and, and people have asked me in the past. And so I'm wondering, is that just something that's gone by the wayside? Or is that like, is, is there no future in that, you think, or?
I, I wouldn't say that there's no future in there that has gone by the wayside. I think for us as Alamosa County, we, we understand of like, the hunting's not happening within here, right? And so how do we package that? And, and I'll be honest, I've had a hotelier who's like, they're very uncomfortable when they have hunters come through. Like there's hotels that are like, it's, you know, whether they're bringing their guns in or when they're cleaning game in the tubs, it's, yeah. So it's, I, I think it's just trying to find what's the best way to product this? And, and what's the best way to promote this? You just don't see, for whatever reason, you don't see a lot of, you know, tourism marketing around hunting. You see a lot on fishing, but you don't see it as much on hunting. And I'm not sure honestly why that is. I don't think it's something that we're saying, well, we don't want hunters here. It's just trying to find the best way to promote that and where. And some of it might be that we find, you know, those magazines and, you know, putting some stuff in there. But I think it's that, there's a lot of different issues potentially around it. Most of them are either camping as well too. So they're not necessarily bringing that business into the area. It's, yeah. I, I think if we wanted to set up a committee or have some people that are more experienced within sort of that, you know, realm of travel, we'd definitely be open because that expertise isn't within our office. My father-in-law's a hunter, but I'm not.
Can I add a little?
Yeah.
So both, so previous live, so when I first moved here and I ran Crokers and Hungry Lager in South Fork, which was a big business there. And obviously that area has a ton of hunting and it was all of this welcome hunters and all of this type of stuff. The other thing I'll say is when I worked for Great Lakes Airlines, which I worked for, for there for 13 years, many hunters flying in and flying out, but also not staying here. They're really, they come into Alamosa obviously to fly in, but they go to the areas where it's closer to hunt. And so similar probably to the same sort of challenges with the skiers. And so not saying that in the future, maybe there's something, again, putting a package together. But again, the hunters are pretty much here for that timeframe to hunt. So, but I just thought I'd give a little feedback that they come through Alamosa, but that is something where they don't really stay here.
And I think Andy has his, his light on.
Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kel, how's the tax doing? And just not to change the conversation, but what is the tax and, and how's it doing? And then you said there was a campground moratorium? I didn't know that. And can we talk a little bit about why the, why the county did that?
Yeah. So I'll start off with the tax. So we are structured on a lodging tax at 2%, so anything under 30 nights. And that counts for short term rentals because we're set up on the county that other communities have had to fight against short term rentals and actually collecting on that. Because of our structures, the county Airbnb, Verbo, it's already written in and they're already paying those taxes. So we have a 2% lodging tax and then a 4% marketing district tax on that. So our, right now, our lodging taxes, if you look at our bed tax, it's 6% on anything under 30 nights. So what we saw coming out of COVID or what the county saw was a high demand for people wanting to come up, parcel their land, set up campgrounds. I think at, there was a time where they had 10 different applications in for campgrounds. And the planning commission suggested that they put a moratorium on any new approval of the permits until they finish their comprehensive plan. So once they finalize that comprehensive plan, that moratorium went away. So it is open now, but it's, reasonings and all that is.
That, that was a shrug that's not often picked up by Zoom.
No, I'm not sure. I, there's probably different opinions on why or how that came about. I think their concern was that their language that they had within that wasn't what they were hoping in development. So they wanted to put a pause on any new development until they had that language stronger and what they wanted. And then you had asked how lodging tax was doing, so not just what it is, but how's it doing? It's catching up. We had a slow start to the year. I think we were projecting around three to 5% down based off of last year. Last collections that I saw were, were about 0.5% down of last year and about 1.8% down on the year before that. So we're starting to catch up that fall, travel is doing well. But yeah, there was a little bit of a, kind of a hiccup and slow start right there in that May-June time.
Thank you.
Kel, can you, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong. One of the things though is it's still, we're doing well, even if the visits are down, but the, how much they're charging is higher. Is that correct?
So it has been. So some of our collections, when we came out of COVID and that pent up travel was coming back, we were seeing our, and I use average daily rate because for me, that's the best example. So, because we'll hear the $230, $250 night. That's not, those are when they're fully booked and they have one room left. So when we look at average daily rate, what we look at is amongst all our different properties. So there's 11 properties that report on this. And we see, I think previously, so prior to 2020, our average daily rate in peak summertime was around 130. We saw that creep up to 150, 160 in 2021 and 2022. And average daily rates, and this is across the board and not just unique to Alamosa. For the state of Colorado, we saw those average daily rates stay pretty high even through last year. This year, however, which is why we're seeing actually an increase in occupancy, we were above 80% in August, which was a first since probably ever. And, and a lot of that's because that daily rate's starting to come down. It's coming back a little bit more to reality and people aren't going to spend as much and the hotels are seeing that. Councilor Krebs?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I have a couple thoughts, so I'm going to throw them all at you. And you can parse them out and spit them back. And going off of, so at the beginning, going off of what Counselor Vio mentioned, you had mentioned a drain on the resources. What would be a possible drain on local resources that would deter tourism other than having a large group of people here? You mentioned sustainable tourism and the suggestions, pardon me, the suggestions right now have a feel of we need to get the ball rolling. But I guess for my question is, have you put any plans in place on how to keep the ball rolling? And to that end, and you did touch on it once, how difficult is the hotel buy-in? Is it something that you're kind of starting from scratch with? Or do you have some of the owners helping with that? With training the staff and having staff, especially the ones over by the movie theater, where they probably live here, but they're recommending Chili's, you know, or a movie. And then festivals, are, are any part of your team recommending outside festivals to come in and host? I know the mu, the music one was big. It kind of fell flat and then it's kind of gone away. But I know that the county was struggling for a little bit, if I remember correctly, in years past about people wanting to bring a music festival location into the valley and it kept getting voted down. But, you know, but, and I'm using music as an example, not as a permanent, but outside festivals coming in. We tried barbecue for a little bit. And tourism hubs, you mentioned the airport, but they're kind of walking through. Have you considered tourism hubs to capture them while they're, while they're coming through? If there's known locations where they're congregating? And I'm thinking like that, or like how the hotels have those walls of pamphlets, but maybe something more outstanding for them to grab? That's it.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Well, my brain's going all over the place. So, so you'll have to probably remind me on some of these questions there and I'm going to start probably more fresher and then try to work my way back to that first question. Bringing in outside festivals, I, I don't think we're opposed to it. Our office hasn't, like, I don't think there's a strategy right now that says, okay, how can we bring something in? So we look at, and I believe the music festival you were referring to was like the Seven Peaks? When they brought that in, right? Huge impact, tons of big artists bringing them in, but they didn't make it work. If it worked for them, they'd be back. There's a lot of upfront costs on a lot of those things and, and what's, what's the draw? What's the impact? So like I look at a seven peaks of huge event, brings a lot of people in, but what's the actual local impact to that, right? When all your campground is going onsite there and, and, right? So you're not filling your campground, you're not filling your hotels, it's all onsite there. They brought in vendors. So all those vendors are, you know, setting up and collecting there. It's not going to our local restaurants. So there's a lot of dip, not saying that we couldn't. I, I think we have to find the right one and that the community, something that the community also wants with it. So to the idea, and like, I think that's a perfect example of, from Visit Alamosa's perspective, where we position ourselves is like, dude, do we think a music venue would be great? And is it a cool idea? And could we bring, yeah, absolutely, we could. But if all the neighbors around that area are saying, absolutely not, not in my backyard, I don't want this, we can't force that on them just because it's a benefit for whatever else that is. Like it has to be a community buy-in. Like that's kind of how we're positioning a little bit. I do remember, okay, so the drain on resources, I think that just depends. I mean, one of the things that we have to take into consideration is it's water, right? Water is a huge part of the valley. And, and so when we're looking at some of these different things of whether it's development of something like, that that's always fresh of mind, that what are we doing to protect our resources in that sense? Most of the time when we're talking about draining of resource, maybe it's not resources the best one. But it's, a great example is we've done First Fridays, which was huge, right? And it's activating this new space that we got and it's bringing market vendors out and it's supporting local businesses. And I'm getting an elected official coming and telling me, can you do this in the other night? I can't get into my restaurant. Which do you want? Do you want your local businesses to thrive and do well? Or do you want it to be this, right? And, and that's one mindset. But if we were to oversaturate everything and it's no longer feeling like a community downtown or a thing that they can enjoy as well. or a thing that they can enjoy as well, right? That's the balancing act that we're trying to have.
And Kale, let me, the other aspect from an example perspective is if you look at the sand dunes or other state or national parks, they're really trying to do the campaign of leave no trace behind. And so when you're getting these numbers that the trash or those types of things are having less of an impact and that people are trying to be more mindful of that as well.
Yeah, yeah. And we've included that language. And so I think one of your questions is how do you get the ball rolling? And then how do we keep it rolling? So I mean, it's one of those things we've, there's been efforts within this realm, right? Whether it's the leave no trace principles, do Colorado right, we include in our messaging. We've had conversations with the national park. How do we avoid that 10:00 AM rush hour of an hour and a half wait on Saturday to get into the national park? It's not a good visitor experience, it's not a good community experience. So navigate a little bit of that, utilize resources at the state level that are doing this and learning from other destinations that are doing some things. And so this is more of that document that's going to support our role within this. Cause again, I think historically tourism's been about advertising, promotion and marketing. And so how do we manage the destination? How do we, because I don't necessarily think that our success is that there's tourism growth. Our success is that there's an economic benefit to the community and the community continues to support it. Right? It doesn't mean that we need 100,000 more people to come through, right? It's, are we capitalizing? That's at the comfort level for the community on tourism. And then, okay, the tourism hubs, you have to maybe expand a little bit on that one. Are you talking about like mess? How do we get messaging in front of the visitor outside of like airport and hotel rack cards?
Where they seem to congregate the most? Like for example, the city put in the kiosks downtown so that people walking through can see what else is going on. You got, you got, yeah, see that kind of.
Collaboration, yeah.
And collaboration. And but when you mentioned that they, the hunters don't stay, but they land at the airport, that seems like a prime marketing spot to say, oh, hey, grab this coupon for dinner in town, that kind of thing. And which leads into the hotel buy-in. And you did mention the, the kind of, hey, come out and come see what we have, but you're almost preaching to the choir because a lot of them are local anyway. So how do you keep that message going? Do you have buy-in from the hotel owners to help promote their own hotels, basically?
Oh, they're good about promoting their own hotels. I think it's everything else outside of that. And to your point of like, they promote Chili's and because it's all right there and it's walkable. So, yeah, I think it's, it's a little bit of a mixed bag as far as what do we have as our hotels? And what are they supporting and not supporting? Each, they're each individual locals that have their preferences and have their, I like this, not this sort of mindset. You know, we've, I feel like we have good relationships there though, as far as we make sure if they're allowed through their sort of corporate office to get visitor guides within their rooms. We've put up sort of a smaller version of a kiosk that has a poster that has a QR code to our events. And we put in a food and drink guide in there and we put our visitor guide and any other material that we want. And it's our stand that we get to supply. You know, I think the interesting thing is it's, the consumer behavior is going to change how we reach them. So our welcome center has gone through a change. Our welcome centers have always been wall-to-wall brochures. It's what people came in for, that and the restroom. That's not as much of a need with the demographics that we're seeing. So how do we, is it an app that hits them before they come into market? Is it digital kiosks that we place around town? It's continuing to be creative and knowing that there's changes coming through consumer behavior and how they're getting information, if that helps. But finding those, and we are, we are working with the airport. We have that same kiosk there. We've taken over their TVs and putting our videos up and looking at opportunities for advertisement for local businesses. So if you have ideas, we are all ears. Cause we're, we're trying anything and everything to get as much information in front of us as we can.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah. Council Jan Vio?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kale, you were talking about in the off season, how to spur tourism and that. And you can't really do it through leisure. I'm wondering if you have any statistics or any thoughts on, on the impact of local high schools and that, or Adam State, when they host huge athletic tournaments and that, or speech debates and things where sometimes in the middle of the winter, every hotel is booked because there's a tournament in Center, there's a tournament in La Jara, there's a tournament. And like, I've always, I, I think people at the schools understand the impact of that, but I don't think elected officials truly understand that.
Yeah, the hotels understand that. I mean, we look at, right? And I think it's, there's, there's good and bad to that. The good is that it's in the off season and that when they're struggling to fill their hotel rooms, all of a sudden they're booked. Problem is that it's usually like a one weekend thing and every high school is doing it on the same weekend. And so it becomes to where it almost feels like price gouging probably for some, not the high schools. They have contracts set up and doing that, but then a family's coming and visiting to watch that. So how do we coordinate that a little bit more with our hotels to make sure that experience exists? So very much sports tourism has existed here. I don't think we've recognized it and I don't think we've leveraged it. And so that's going to be a part of this plan. High schools, Adam State University hosting these things will continue on. As an example, we have, I think the swim coach at Adam State is also the club coach. They're going to be hosting a regional meet for the state, 300 swimmers, which is the average two people traveling with them that are staying in hotels. It's going to be a huge weekend. The problem is they're doing it on a weekend in August. And so how do we find those things? Like, how do we get Andy and get some club volleyball tournaments that happen in March or February? How do we get club basketball here, the ice hockey? How do we leverage that on top of like the idea that we have those resources, right? We have Adam State, we have local high schools, we have Parks and Rec. So how do we put that together and then go and promote it out? But no, it's, the reason we have hotels in such a seasonal destination and why we're continuing to see growth, like there's a reason Manny's willing to invest and put another hotel in because the market's there. It's because of Adam State. It's because of the sports that come in in the off season. If it was a three month window of summer, we'd have hotels, but not what, not what we do now.
Okay, I think I see Council Carson's hand.
Yeah. So, and this is maybe a dumb question, but do you think that the new hotel will help Manny and maybe the other hotel owners bring that whole like median price range down for the hotel? Do you think it's going to affect it positively? I guess is my question to simplify it.
It depends on what side you're sitting on. From, from our side of things, I think it'll be beneficial. You know, it should bring that average daily rate down, especially when we're looking at the summertime and when those prices really start to creep up there. If you're on the hotel side, it's, you know, they like the average daily rate to be a little bit higher, but that's all on their metric of what they call revenue per available room. How much money are they going to make per each room? And I can tell you, Manny's a smart individual, he's ran those numbers, he has that prediction. So it should be, it could probably be good on both sides. You know, I think if you're the, the GMs, that's, that's where it's different. Cause the GMs are competitive in what they want their prices to be and they want them higher. But again, I think it's what's best for everybody. It's what's best for the visitor, the community. Cause usually when we hear complaints, it's that the community members are the ones that complain to us, not the visitors. And it's when they're hosting their families in town and they see those prices. And they're the ones that know where to find us to say, what is this $230 a night? But I think things are changing and our price sort of index and what we're able to draw in. I think just as a, you know, I had a meeting with Kamal, who's running the new Cosmos. He's charging $1,400 a night on that property. That's a new audience that we've, we've never had and people are paying it. So I think we're going to see sort of this new demographic, new consumer that's coming through. But the downtown hotels should help, I think, everybody. It gives them a new product to push out to.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Kale, what are some of the low hanging fruit we can implement utilizing some of the things that we currently have in our city to help promote tourism? I'm just thinking about, I know sometimes when we travel to different places, they have walk-in tours to where the hotels sometimes would offer you headset to walk around the general area. And then they're mapped out places, the things that you can see. Have we explored that or thinking about that with our murals and also the art that we have in the sculptures downtown?
Yeah, I think we've, we've considered that. I think we're working on the best way of developing some of that. Like we've, we've had an art scape brochure that kind of gives a tour. We're working on digital maps that kind of do that. And then with the murals, it gets, it's this continual evolution of everything that gets added. So how do we keep collecting that information and packaging it together? I, I think one of the struggles is there's apps that will do that. And we've seen Sawatch County go and spend, I think 80% of their budget, what they get in tourism to develop an app. The problem is they only had 20% of their budget left to get people to download the app. That's the biggest challenge is we can create those, those things. It's how you actually get them to do it. So like if you add a hotel that's in, now in downtown Alamosa, and that's the starting point to do this little tour of the art scape and the historic buildings and like there's, yeah. Something we've worked on and will continue to work on. I don't think we've found the solution yet, but we'll continue to.
Okay, thank you.
And that's like, you'll see like History Colorado and SLV Museum and creating that very much within that alignment.
Okay, thank you. I see Deacon has his light on.
I have a question and kind of an observation. One of the things that you mentioned is how August, you know, was, was good and the autumn was good. One of the things that kind of occurred to me is that there's a lot of construction going on and has been in the last couple of months with a lot of out of town construction firms like Nuns. It's been doing the courthouse and then, and Credit Union had a bunch of folks here. And I feel like every time you drive by the, what's the big hotel in East Alamosa? You always see lots of cherry pickers and big equipment in there. So how, how does that play into the equation or does it?
It does. I, I think it depends on the product or the project. So it's like a good example, Cool Sunshine RV, that works with a lot of those companies. Cause a lot of them come in their RVs, but they're there for two months. So once it goes above, which is good for them, like they need that business and this supports them and we're supportive of that. We don't see the tax collection on that because it's above that 30 night stay.
Got it.
So it just depends on the project. If it's a one-off and maybe it's two weeks, yes, it brings in and supports.
But it's almost like we're adding to our population. So eating, shopping, some of that behavior, we would see a benefit from that perspective.
Yeah, absolutely.
The second question I had is the train. And the, the, has there been any, any discussion on that? And this is really just personal curiosity.
And I'm assuming you're talking about the Engine 169 here?
Uh, yes, yes. You know, anything involving scenic train routes out of Alamosa.
So, nothing that we're pursuing yet and nothing that we've heard that makes us optimistic and saying we're going to get passenger trains back through Alamosa that goes over La Vida. That being said, when I talk about the valley being sort of, it's like if we created its own product, like we see the benefit of Culberson Toltec. We know people are staying in Alamosa when they go to visit it. We have tour operators have contracts with hotels that are doing two nights in Alamosa because they're coming in the night, they're staying, going to eat. They're riding the Culberson Toltec, staying the night and then going to Durango. It's vacation by rails, that's their whole package is these, these bus trips that are coming through. So, you know, it's one of those of how much do we pursue creating a new sort of thing? And I have no idea what that would take. Or capitalizing on, you know, the Culberson Toltec and what we have as far as resources within the valley. Is that?
Okay, here we go. Andy and then Council Carson.
Well, yeah, just to clarify, the 169 is what's just sitting over here. But I'll tell you, I shared with their board, because I sit on their board, that that was on there. And I mean, the, the chair was like, well, I got rooms full of stuff all over. So I mean, I mean, they certainly should be at the table if you guys want to develop, you know, rail tourism a little bit more. That's all I had. Thanks.
That would be very cool. Okay, Council Carson?
So just on a quick note, to, to touch on Deacon's question. I, I had done a lot of research when, before they sold the train. And one of the issues with passengers, and I don't know, I mean, the Culbress is a staple. They're, they're figuring their own thing up. But passenger trains are extremely like outrageously expensive to insure. And so one of the issues that I understood is that it's not a profitable game. And the likelihood of it coming back here is very, very slim to none. But anyway, that's just from what I've understood. It's extremely difficult to pull off because insuring people is really expensive, I guess. And, but my other question was, one of the things that I, or observation was, one of the things that I've noticed is, especially when you have a lot of construction going on, we, it seems like those hotels are so full at times, you can't really even get through the road right there by like SLV Fed or Real Grand Savings. Like when you're trying to get through there to the theater. And that's just something that I'm putting out there for us as a city that we need to think about for future growth is from Walmart, you know, where you go from there to the theater, if you're taking that little back road, you get four or five big trucks on that road, even hunters or where there are cherry pickers, you know, boom trucks. You can barely get a big truck through there. Like I've, I've gotten stuck there in traffic several times where you're having to wait for, you know, the line of cars going east or west to get through. So it seems like they're pretty busy down there on a regular basis. That seems like it's been going on for months now. So we need to probably think about that for the future there.
Thank you, Council Carson. Kale, what, what type of tourism or activities that you think would be successful here in Alamosa?
So what we would love to see, and I think that's going to be part of this plan, is sort of that guided historic experience. Whether that's on the Los Caminos, whether that's within our downtown and the historic buildings, right? We can put some of these things through an app, we can put them on a brochure. But someone that can tell that story and have an engaging presence with it, like people will pay for that. Like people are paying over $200 to go on the off-road in a Jeep behind a national park. Like they will spend $50 for a guided tour that tells them the history and the story of Alamosa and the railroad and how it came about. So how do we support that? How do we find those that are best suited to kind of take that on? And I think it's, it's that guided experience that people are looking for, something that connects them there. The other one on that one, I'd say that's really right within there is that sort of farm to table experience, like on a consistent basis, not a one-off event. But if we had, you know, a local farm that could show them during the day what it's like to harvest and what it's like to be working a farm and then have that dinner that ties connectually straight to it. People will spend a lot of money on those as well. But it's kind of the experience and that it's a guided experience.
With that being said, have we thought about the local farm park that we have over there, including them? And has anyone tried that yet?
As far as like a dinner?
Yes.
I know they've done dinners out there and I think that's where I clarify on like, it can't just be this one-off. So, so our biggest problem is that we're telling these people out of state, out of the country, hey, come and visit and here's an experience you can have if you come this one weekend and this one month at this one time. It's, it's a hard thing to, it has to be on that consistent basis, right? If it's every, every Thursday night at six, right? And that there's this, we can, we can push that, we can promote that. And there's people that are interested in that. But it's that consistent basis that's easy to promote.
And when you talk about a tour to where someone's talking about the history, is that a vehicle guided tour? Is that a walk-in tour? What, what are you visualizing?
Both. I, I do feel like, so I think a walking tour. And in all honesty, I think like the historic preservation group that you have, like if there was a fundraiser that you guys need to have, like we can make the starting point, the welcome center, right? And we have the parking for it now and it can be that central point. And then boom, from there you can, you can start an hour and a half walking tour that kind of loops around up the downtown Alamosa. I know there's been some conversations mainly with my dad, who was helping out on that Jeep tour of like, hey, how can we convert this Jeep tour and actually give someone that experience that does the Los Caminos? Cause there's, that's the whole story of the valley, right? Through that little road pass and it's a half day excursion. And it's someone that knows the history and can tell the stories. And yeah, people would pay for that as well. So it's both, I think there's opportunity for both.
Okay, thank you. Council Carson?
Hey, so this idea might seem a little bit out there, but one of the things that you, you might try to see or we see how we push would be when you're talking about a walking tour, including some sort of piece that would bring in people with ADA, like, like, like a tour that could include, whether it be something as simple as like a rickshaw or like a. whether it be something as simple as like a rickshaw or like something else, a tour where they're, 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 their little jet scooters could go around, something to include the ADA population in that. I think that would be really cool. And and if you have something that reaches that population, it just makes it more, makes it stick out in that genre that much more, you know what I mean? Or that, that group that much more. So might be something to think about, like they just unveiled, and I'm sorry I couldn't make it, but they just unveiled the handicap swing at the park. And I had heard a lot of positive stuff about that. So it might be something to consider.
No, absolutely. And there's, I don't think that's out of, there, there's resources and the Colorado Tourism Office has a program that will come in and look at how accessible is your community as, as a visitor coming in? Uh, and we can look at, okay, what do we need to improve? And is there any funding through a WET that then we can actually go after and, and make some of these things? And right? Is it your walking tour? Is it accessible? Is it, you know, is it inclusive to everybody?
Awesome. Thank you.
I don't see any other lights on or hands up. I just have one more thing I just wanted to bring up since we're talking about tourism. I rode on that train rail bike thingy in, um, South Fork, I think that's where it is. Is it South Fork?
Yeah.
Yeah, South Fork. Has there been any, any interest in anyone doing anything going eastward, uh, from the train station that we have here? Leaving from maybe the train station or the welcome center? I'm sorry.
No, but I think a few reasons for that is that it's still an operating line and they still run freight on there. We see every now and then like these little cars. And there's a group that comes through and it's like these little mini, like two-seater train cars that, that they'll do. And so they coordinate that with the railroad and when they can come through and doing all that. But I think a lot of the issue is, uh, I think one of the cool components to the revolution is that they can also ride up and then they wrapped back. Um, and so that kind of full experience, not just the,
That's right.
It's beautiful landscapes, but it's a pretty.
Yep, street. It is. Okay. Just thinking. Okay. Any, any other comments? I figure we could take some reel to Harry's house and back.
Lunch it.
Go ahead.
Yes, um. I, I, I love this idea. Um, it takes me back. Anytime I travel with my kids, me and the wife love to do walking tours, boat tours, whatever you name it. But in our home, the, the people that make the ultimate decision is the children. So have we thought about something where, I mean, maybe tourists are coming to town and these children want to get off their phone for an hour. What if they don't want to go do a walking trail or something? Me and my buddies back in high school, when we had a free semester, we'd go back here to Real Grand, throw a tube in the water and float down the river. Something so simple, uh, indoor water park. I mean, my kids still, they can't get over water, whether it's frozen or what. They, they want something to do. Basically, i- if we can appeal to the children as well, not just, you know, the adults. Cause I mean, like I said, my kids make the ultimate say, you know?
Good point. That's a good point. Okay. Councilor Krebs wanted to make a comment and then I'm gonna let him go ahead. You can, you can go ahead and respond to him.
Oh, I'm just like, that absolutely is part of like, and I don't, maybe I skipped over that and some of this stuff, but like, so the seasonality, we want to find like, okay, what's that experience for kids, right? Like what, what can we take them to? How can we support that? Not that we fund that, but how can we support that? And then, um, no, I, I love this idea of like, finding that. So I'll give you a little preview. We're, we're working on a campaign right now and it's, the, the campaign is find your connection. Connection to place, connection to people, connection to food, right? And, and telling our story through that. And a lot of that is like disconnecting, right? And, and serving that. And so we can't market to kids, but we can absolutely market to those parents of kids and those opportunities. And like these, maybe it's not walking tour, but like some of these things of like, yeah, how do we make this like an educational experience and providing activities that they'll actually do. But I do like the tubing and I think we've got some things working on in there.
And I guess my, it just makes me think of my only suggestion. I know you guys have, have beat the idea to death of, of how can we attract this demographic and how can we theme things a certain way based on interests? But, um, I guess my only suggestion is to remember to keep the fun side of it. And if you did like a keep Alamosa weird and included the alligator farm and the alien thing down the street, you know, and have some things based around that just to through. And that's where I li- I enjoy First Fridays because there's that lightheartedness behind it, even if it's themed kind of thing. Scavenger hunts, things of that nature. So that's all, that's all I got.
Well, I think we have to play to our strengths and, and that is some of our strengths, right? Whether it's the UFO Watchtower, and I can't tell you how many people love that place. And, and when I run in, run into my counterpart at, at Colorado Springs, she raves about the Gator Farm. Loves the Gator Farm. I mean, it's like, tells all her friends and anyone that comes through, you gotta go to the, to the valley and go to the Gator Farm. I think it's, it's finding that balance to it of being like, yes, there is some like, there's history and heritage and culture here that's rich. But it's also like, it's fun to hear the story of how the Gator Farm started. And how do we put that within our marketing? And how do we do, like it, it is still the story of, of the area and I don't want to, we're never going to move away from that. Um, but like that, like that lighthearted, right? How do we play that into her?
Okay. Well, I don't see any lights. Uh, Kale, Kale, do you have any last minute comments of what we can do to help?
And I, I think just, um, appreciate the opportunity to come and present this to city council. I know we, uh, very much work closely with the staff here at the city of Alamosa and, and appreciate that partnership and everything that we've done there to this point. And city council, I know like this First Fridays programs and getting this support behind a destination development position has been huge. And, and it's just, you know, it's that snowball effect and it's continuing to roll. So appreciate all the support to this point. And just know that if you have any questions from my office or if there's an idea that we have and it's like, we want the city, that we feel like we have that support. So just continuing that is, is all we need.
And Mayor, I just want to take this opportunity to thank Kale and his team. I just, I, I think under his leadership and the team he has, the partnership with the city has been, has been really amazing. And they dedicate a lot of time on sitting on a lot of our advisory boards and, and really trying to be intentional with how that engagement looks like. And then it sounds like this strategy is even going to make that even more type of situation. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Kale.
We appreciate it.
And your team has, they have a lot of energy, man. Boy, I tell you. So that's good. Whatever you're doing, they like working there.
I'm good.
Keep it up.
All right.
All right. That's it, everybody. Thank you, everybody. All right. Thank you.